Well, good evening and welcome to the Federal Way City Council regularly scheduled City Council meeting for February 16th of 2016. Would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? And our Lake Haven Water District Commissioner, Lake Len England, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
(inaudible)
Don't we do the ... oh, I see. We have, I'm sorry, before we do the pledge, I'm sorry, we have Troop 361 here. Please remain standing. We have Troop 361 here to present the colors.
Color guard, port mark. Troop pen salute. Color guard halt. Color guard, prepare close to colors. Color guard, close to colors. Color guard, hand salute. Two. Color guard, return to ranks. Color guard halt. Audience to the east.
Len?
(applause) My pledge allegiance? To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Len, and thank you, Troop 361, very much. We appreciate that. It's great to see the Boy Scouts out here in force today, so we're going to hear from you in just a few moments. We have some preliminary matters, presentations. We've got the Certificate of Appointment to the Independent Salary Commission. Deputy Mayor Burridge.
Thank you very much. At the February 2nd Council meeting, council confirmed the mayor's reappointments of James England and Michael Christner as voting members of the Independent Salary Commission. And if either of these folks is here this evening, James England or Michael Christner, would you please come forward so that I can present certificates of appointment? I know at least one of you is out of town. Okay. I will just simply read the certificates and they will be mailed. These are certificates of appointment to the Federal Way Independent Salary Commission for terms continuing through February 28th, 2020, dated the 16th day of February, 2016, and signed by the council and mayor, and we're most appreciative of their service. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next, Item B. We've got the one-night count of the homeless report. We've got our Community Development Director, Michael Morales. Michael?
Greetings, Mayor Burridge, and Deputy Mayor Burridge, and Senator of the Council. My name is Michael Morales, I'm the Community Development Director for the City of Federal Way, and I have your presentation for you on the outcomes of the one-night ...
Point-in-time count for the homeless. Before I get into the actual PowerPoint itself, I just want to make sure that we understand that the one-night count are limited to unsheltered homeless individuals on the night that people go out and count. So, it doesn't account for people who are in shelters, or total homeless numbers, and other, you know, situations or conditions which might have led folks to not be included in the count. That full accounting of the analysis of the one-night count will be incorporated into an overall count that'll touch on those numbers. This will be released in March sometime. I understand that you all will be taking a little deeper dive at your retreat this Saturday on the issues and the efforts that are ongoing, and what we may or may not do, or may consider as ways to enhance all the way around our efforts to address the issues of homelessness. Excuse me. So, for the one-night count this year, Federal Way unsheltered persons were 263. For South King County, that's SKC, 750. In East County, 245. In North County, 135. In Seattle alone, Seattle proper, it's 2,942. And for all of King County, it's 4,505. And so, that's kind of an example of, you know, I think people would agree, there's probably a higher number in Seattle and other areas as well, but the one-night count is limited in its scope. In terms of how Federal Way is compared to prior years, we had a significant jump this year, more than any other city that we've seen in the King County numbers. So that we understand the basis for the numbers, there was not a change in the methodology or the locations of counts. So, the 10 areas identified in Federal Way within the city limits of Federal Way are the same areas and limits that we have been using for these years in the measurement data that is here. And so, those numbers are consistent with the same places that we took them from in years prior. That's not working for me. So, the percentage change, as we noted, is 150% increase from last year to this year for Federal Way, compared to 42% in South King County, 5% Seattle, and 19% for overall King County. King County saw, I believe, about a 14% change last year. Are there any questions for me on the data?
Counsel, any questions? Counsel, Mr. Murdock.
It's not on the data, but I was wondering, could we get a comparison of what the other South County cities' increase was or decrease was?
Yes.
Compared to other years? I'd like to make a comparison here, and then I'd like to ... I just think if people are being forced out of Seattle because of the dot comers moving in and increasing prices there, where are these people going? And I think if we are being inundated down here in South County, not that I'm against low-income people, but believe me, I worked with them all my life at the multi-service center, but I think there should be a fair share here, or at least in terms of money to help provide the support for these folks that we need. Our city can't pick that all up, so I think some of the other cities where they've come from should be contributing to the services that are going to be required. So, that's why I'd like to delve down a little bit more into these numbers, and then maybe we can put something together and make a case for that.
Yes, and that's actually part of our larger discussion that we'll be having with the council at your retreat as well, and how we compare. In general, the South King County-wide increased percentages are not that far off from the other nearby cities. Ours, you know, we, the needles moved significantly for Federal Way, and it's, it moved significantly more than our neighboring cities, I can tell you that without the actual number.
Yeah, I think that we need to look into and see why.
Absolutely. Any other questions?
Counsel, Mr. Murdock.
Oh, thank you. I heard on the news after, the day after the count was taken, a Seattle City Council member also said that she didn't feel that it was fair that the homeless came to Seattle from the South King County cities. So, it goes both ways.
Okay. Thank you. Counsel, any other questions?
Yeah, but they have more money than we do.
I would like to add that the King County Council also has an interest in seeing member cities participate in a meeting that's taking place in a briefing on this homeless count and other issues, and that's taking place this Wednesday, February 17th, at 1:30 PM. The Coalition is going to have several members there as well, and we're going to see what our staff resources are, for availability to attend that briefing in addition.
All right. Thank you, Mike. Oh, Counsel Member Moore.
Thank you. And, Michael, you may be repeating yourself, and I apologize for that, but what's, what happened to the 2013, 12, and 11 in terms of the comparisons to prior years slide?
I think it was fairly, it's really flat. I mean, we're, it's, we'd jump back to when we had a significant increase, you know, before, and 2010 was that year, and if you think about the wave of the recession and how, when things bottomed out, you were kind of getting to that point. So, that was sort of the last uptick in homeless population that we'd seen.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Anything else, Counsel? All right. Thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
All right. Now, it's time for my report. Last week, we had the hearing, last Thursday, in these chambers regarding the proposed methanol plant in Tacoma. We had a room about as packed as this room is right now, standing room only. It was a great opportunity to hear from the community. Our Community Development Director gave us a report, we heard from our legal counsel, and the council unanimously passed a resolution opposing the sighting of the, what would be the largest methanol plant in the world on the Tide Flats.[756.62][756.62](applause) Just about two and a half miles from our, from our border, and just very, very close to our population center. So, that has been transmitted to the Port of Tacoma and to the City of Tacoma, and we will make sure that we are engaged in that process moving forward. This Thursday, there is a meeting at the, at the Port about, a work-study session about the methanol plant. We will be sending a representative, somebody from our, one of our Assistant City Attorneys will be attending that, and to make sure we learn more about this and make sure we don't skip a step. Also, we had previously stated that the next public hearing for the scoping, or for the environmental impact statement, what they call the EIS, was actually supposed to be tonight, but that has been moved in, it's in the City of Tacoma, at their convention center, and it's been moved to the 24th, so a week from tomorrow. And I believe, what's the time on that?
The door is open at 5:00. The hearing starts at 6:30.
Very good. So, the door's open, and we would really encourage for those that are interested and for those that want to be engaged to, to go down and get involved in that process. Again, the process right now for the methanol facility is about the scope of the environmental review, but there's going to be time moving on. It was very important for this council and for my administration to make sure that when they're talking about scope for review, that they actually include the City of Federal Way and its impact on our population, and especially in light of how close it was. And what we were very concerned about is we had never heard any official word from the Port or from the City of Tacoma. So, then they've heard from us now. So, that's done. So, keep an eye on that. We'll keep you, definitely keep you updated. We have the beautiful picture here of Corporate Headquarters, formerly known as the Warehouser Headquarters, I guess you could still call it that, but IRG, a company down in California, if you haven't already heard about it, has purchased that site. I believe it was reported in the media that it was a $70 million transaction. Very, very exciting. IRG, the Industrial Realty Group, centered out of California, but they've got a worldwide operation, and they've got, they own over 100 million square feet of real estate in the, in the United States, in 28 states. And their specialty is the redevelopment and redeployment of commercial properties like this in their regional marketplace. They did the Goodyear International Headquarters in Akron, Ohio. They're actually working right now in the NFL Hall of Fame Complex in Canton, Ohio. I think they've done a few Air Force bases, and so the idea here really is, is that once Warehouser Corporate leaves the site, when their Seattle location is finished, then IRG, between now and then, is working on making sure that they've repurposed this property and have some good tenants moving forward. So, we will definitely keep everybody involved and knowledgeable about everything that we hear about that. The good news is, is that Warehouser and IRG and Heartland, the company that was working with Warehouser to, to sell the property, involved us on a weekly basis, and it was a very, very good process. I'd like to thank my Chief of Staff, Brian Wilson, for the regular meetings, and we actually had Heartland folks in our office on a regular basis to brief us on what they were doing. And then actually, as a show of good faith, the leadership team, the CEO of IRG actually flew up here with his investment team about a week, about two weeks, actually, before the sale went through. So, very exciting things. We'll make sure we keep you involved. But in regard to this, really landmark property, it is a, it's a, it's a key turning point in the redevelopment of this property. So, we'll definitely keep you updated on that. Rebranding efforts, next steps. We are really excited to have Rusty George with us. We have contracted with Rusty George Creative out of Tacoma, Washington, and he is with us today to talk about how the City of Federal Way is actually repositioning itself in the region. So, Rusty, take it away, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council members. My name is Rusty George, and I'm the Principal of Rusty George Creative, and we've worked with several municipalities and civic entities, and we're honored to be working with you now. And basically, what we do is logos and taglines and websites and videos, but our job is not going to be to create a logo, a pretty logo and a tagline for you. Did you know that you're actually being exposed to more information in one week right now than the average person living in 1850 was exposed to in his entire lifetime? And by the time you go home tonight, you'll have been exposed to over 7,500 different marketing messages, people trying to get at you, get your attention, and try to sell you something. So, the City of Federal Way understands that. You know that the City of Seattle is underneath this white-hot spotlight. People are moving here from all over because of the great opportunities, and it's getting filled up. And there are so many other communities that are doing the same thing. They want to get louder. They want to be in front of these people. And so, now is time to act. And what we're hired to do is distill down that core essence of the City of Federal Way, and what makes people want to live, work, and play here, and have it, and develop this, you know, kind of rallying cry for its citizens, and make you that much more attractive and alluring to those audiences that you want to be attractive and alluring to. So, we'd love to show you all kinds of great, cool graphics and stuff, but unfortunately, we've just begun. The first thing we did is we sat down with the mayor and a couple of council members and staff members, and really laid on the table about your vision, your successes, all the exciting things that are going on right now, your challenges, et cetera. We attended the State of the City address last week, and we just, we began our preliminary research, and it's been really fascinating so far. And we came away with more questions than answers. And now is actually your turn, and what we want to do, our next step, is to hear from you. We kind of took all those questions that we had, and we put them into a survey. And next week, on the week of the 22nd, we will be deploying that survey, where we ask you to give us your opinions, and I have an impression that this is a pretty opinionated crowd.[1163.12][1163.12](laughter) And we want to have your angles, your stories, everything that you think are the things that are going well for City of Federal Way, and all the things that you think that we can improve, what you think is the main motivator of the City of Federal Way. And so, be looking on social media. We'll also be sending it out via email to a lot of the constituent databases, et cetera. But be sure to be looking for that, because every opinion counts. It'll be then our job to distill all that information and find those patterns and find those really, those things that people really want to talk about. And we're going to be giving a discovery presentation in the middle of next month with the key stakeholder team and the task force to say, this is what we discovered, and these are the recommendations about what, how we should talk about, and what we should create as far as visual messaging and standards and, and marketing and communications materials. And from that, we'll, we'll kind of come up with an idea of what we're going to do. We'll then have a very transparent process where we develop this brand, develop all these communications materials, and it'll be our job, or it'll be our goal to actually unveil this at the Town Square reopening event on July 9th. I mean, hopefully, we'll get done a little bit sooner. We're going to have all kinds of great things to do with that, but those are the things that we're going to be doing. So, everybody look for some kind of an opportunity to, to be involved. We'll also be interviewing people that we believe are, or you believe are the key stakeholders, people that we should actually interview one-on-one, and, and we'll be gathering all the intel that we possibly can. So, any questions?
Great. Counsel, any questions? Counsel Member Honda, and then Counsel Member Maloney.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Will the council have a chance to see the survey before it goes out?
Yes. The, the, it's going through staff and also are making it so that it's approved by the council. Also, the council will be getting your own questionnaire, because it's a lot more involved. And any suggestions that we have from you, if you'd like to actually talk with us one-on-one for a half-hour interview, or if you believe that there's someone in the community that we may have forgotten, we're actually already talking with the Superintendent of Schools and the Executive Director of Advancing Leadership, and if there's anyone else that you would suggest, please, by all means, don't hesitate to call us.
Okay. Thank you.
And on that point, did we have a, Brian Wilson, our Chief of Staff?
I was just going to say that we received the draft survey documents from Rusty George this last Friday. So, I have those, and the plan is to distribute those this week for council and for our team to get feedback, and then we'll work towards to finalize that document, hopefully by the end of the week.
All right. Thank you. Counsel Member Maloney.
Thank you. Thank you, Rusty. That was really interesting. So, one thing you said that I want to just make sure I understood, did you say that we, this initiative will not include a new logo and a new tagline, or did you say it's not only that?
Not just.
Okay. Gotcha. Gotcha.
Yeah. When people think about branding, you know, they say, well, we already have a logo. I mean, there it is, right there. It's not necessarily about just creating a mark. A mark, like the Ritz-Carlton, basically, when you look at it, it's a severed lion's head on a shield. That isn't about the Ritz-Carlton. The Ritz-Carlton brand is about the fact that this little boy lost his pet, his little stuffed giraffe, and when they were leaving, and the parents were so distraught, they called the Ritz-Carlton. The Ritz-Carlton went and took photos of this giraffe, getting a suntan and getting a little massage, and, you know, doing sport, you know, doing tennis and stuff, and they sent it wrapped in a little box and saying, you know, your, your, your pet giraffe just had an extended vacation, and that was what the brand about Ritz-Carlton was. It was about that quality service that is unprecedented. And not like we're going to suggest that for you, but it'll be something along those lines.
Great.
So, that, the whole idea of not just a mark, you're not just paying for a little mark.
Thank you.
You're paying for the entire brand experience.
Fantastic. Thank you. And will you be doing any focus groups?
Focus groups are what we're planning on, we can do if the, if the survey and the interviews don't, if there's still questions after that. We do have it in the budget for that, but we want to see, we think that the community will be able to provide plenty of feedback that we can work with, and we'll assess that at that time.
Great. Thank you so much.
All right. Counsel Member Moore.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. Rusty, thanks for the work you're doing, and I know this has been a talk for a very long time, and now we're doing it, which is great. I appreciated hearing you say that you're going to get everybody involved in this. I think it's really important. And I heard you saying you've connected with some of the council members, is that right?
Pardon me?
I've, I understand that you've connected with some of the council members, is that correct?
Yes, some of the council members that were available to visit the kickoff meeting, and we're more than happy to talk to anyone else as necessary.
Okay. Good, because I'd like to see that and ...
For purposes, if I could, Counsel Member Moore, recall that the earlier group that had been formed, that had formed a committee about this, they were enlisted to meet with Rusty George prior to this, and also, when we meet, and not in this context, we have to be careful not to have four members, because when there are four members, a quorum is achieved.
Right. It wasn't anything, it was a formality and just to kind of, you know, get to know each other.
Yeah, and that's what I suspected, and I just want to make sure that all voices are being heard on the council, the public, and stakeholders. Thank you.
Okay. Oh, Counsel Member Asafad Ossin.
Yes, thank you. Thank you. One of the things I'd like to recommend is that you also reach out to the immigrant population, the different languages, because ...
That was actually one of the observations that we had, too.
Okay. And I think to follow up with what Counsel Member Maloney said, when you have a focus group, maybe it could be around the different groups and different languages where you can actually bring those people together. If you can't translate the printed material in the various languages, it probably could be taken care of in that way, so.
Yeah. Very good feedback. Thank you.
You know, Rusty, it is truly ironic that it was Counsel Member Maloney that was asking you the question about, about the logo and the tagline, because she's been convincing all of us for about a year that it's, that this whole process is not just about that. So, I think while those are important, and they're the initial visual thing, I think we're all looking forward to that, that other messaging as well.
Right. And just one thing I wanted to just dovetail on Counsel Member Maloney, the question about a focus group, this is just basically beginning, and it is kind of a, an evolution, and it's a little bit nebulous right now, and we want to be sure that we're spending your buck as effectively as possible, that if we get great insight from the survey, then, you know, we, if we already kind of locked it in as a, as a big production, then we'd just be wasted money. Or we get there and we say, you know, we still want to have insight from people one-on-one, and we're missing certain sections, then that will be the time that we say that.
Thank you. And do you mind if I ...
Please.
One other question. Did we happen to share the results of the community notebooks with Rusty yet?
Not yet, but we will.
Okay. So, great. Thank you.
We did some homework before we got you on board, Rusty. We'll make sure you get that. Counsel Member Moore.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. Rusty, are you going to be getting in touch with the senior population and young professionals?
My parents live right next to Twin Lakes, and they've already been rifling at me with all kinds of ideas, so they're, they're the first ones. They're, they're ground zero on that, so.
And any young professionals as well?
Yes, yes. We're all, we're, that's what we're doing. We're actually determining all those different groups and represent, representatives of the collective, of the brand of City of Federal Way. And we want to hear all that feedback right now. We don't want to work in a vacuum.
All right. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you all.
Appreciate it.
Good luck.
Appreciate it.[1665.87][1665.87](applause) Okay. Want to tell everybody, Rusty mentioned that we had the State of the City address that he attended. Appreciate you being there. That was two weeks ago, on February 3rd. It was a great opportunity to talk to a room about, just about as packed as this is, and really talking about the exciting initiatives that we're all working on. As Rusty had mentioned, on July 9th, we're going to have the grand opening of Town Square, the grand reopening of Town Square Park with the Great Lawn and the Imperial Pavers and the Splash Park. So, there's going to be a big party, and it's going to be a great opportunity to really unveil what is going to be a true gem in the middle of our downtown, and we've already painted well, not painted, planted, not painted, planted well over 100 trees. So, it's going to be an amazing event. The, and that's going to open again this summer, next summer, in summer of '17, the Performing Arts and Events Center will open, and we are counting the weeks down until that occurs, and they have poured the foundations for that, and it's going to be absolutely an amazing facility, and so watch for that coming in summer of 2017. I talked about the businesses that are coming to Federal Way and the exciting developments, and we're talking about the, we just went out last week, I believe ... of Town Square Park with the, the great lawn and the premierable pavers and the splash park. So there's going to be a big party, and it's going to be a great opportunity to really unveil what is going to be a true gem in the middle of our downtown. And we've already, they've already painted well, not painted, planted, not painted, planted well over 100 trees. So it's going to be an amazing event. The, and that's going to open again this summer, next summer, in summer of 17, the Performing Arts and Events Center will open. And we are counting the weeks down until that occurs. And they have poured the foundations for that, and it's going to be absolutely an amazing facility. And so, watch for that coming in summer of 2017. I talked about the businesses that are coming to Federal Way and the exciting developments. And we're talking about the, we just went out last week, I believe it was Friday, where the request for proposals for the hotel that will go next to the Performing Arts and Events Center, that just went out on Friday. And then, once that is resolved, and we get a hotelier on board for that, then we'll move with our request for proposals for TC3 or Town Center 3, where the old Target Site is. So, we're really watching our town, our downtown transform in front of us, and it's a really exciting event. So, it's a great journey for all of us. And we'll be replaying the State of the City for, on Channel 21. So Channel 21 is a great opportunity to not only watch the council as they replay this meeting and many others in the community, but we're, we also put on community events like the 4th of July, the MLK event, and also the State of the City, and numerous others. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the City Council Annual Retreat. That'll be at Dumas Bay Center this Saturday at 8:30. Doors open at 8:30 a.m. We'll start business at 9:00 a.m. The agenda for that retreat will be available on our brand-new website. So just go to cityoffederalway.com. And I would imagine here, probably sometime tomorrow, we'll get that finalized agenda on it. We'd love to have you there. It's a great opportunity for the council to really roll up their sleeves and talk in a visioning process about the direction we're going, making sure that we're, we're finishing the projects we've got going on, but what does the future look like. And past agendas of that retreat, really, are what, are what, all the things we're talking about now, the pack, the park, the rebranding. And so this is really a, a great opportunity for us to talk about visioning in the future. We had actually, the Sound Cities Board of Directors actually had the opportunity to have breakfast with the governor and the governor's, in the governor's office in the governor's mansion last week. It was a great opportunity to sit down with the governor. In fact, it came out right after those homeless statistics came out, the startling statistics about homeless in the City of Federal Way. I personally had a chance to talk with the governor and key legislative leaders and South County mayors about what can be done about the homeless issue. One of the things I talked about, which I think is really going to be viewed as a model, is the, the day center efforts to provide services to those folks that are homeless and, and, and folks needing additional services to get on their feet. So, it was a great opportunity to talk to the governor and also regional leaders about transportation and homelessness. So, that concludes my report. Now we've got citizen comment, the most important part of the evening. I've got a number of pink sheets. Unless you're speaking for more than five people that are present, it's a three-minute limit. And we'll go in the order they were received. And what I'll do is I'll call out the number, the, the name of the person, and then I'll try to tell the person who's next on deck, so you can start to kind of get yourself in position. Oh, there's another one. Also, anybody that wishes to speak, just fill out a pink sheet and, and file it on over here. All right, that being said, our first speaker is David Lee, and then Mary Ellis.
Thank you, Mayor, and fellow City Council members. My name is David Lee. I'm a range officer with Cub Scout Day Camp and have been on the Cub Scout Day Camp staff for over 25 years. I'm the chartered organizational representative for a pack and a troop here in Federal Way sponsored by the Federal Way United Methodist Church. As, as a range officer in the military, my first job after coming out of active duty was helping Cub Scout Day Camp teach kids how to shoot BB gun range. The shooting sport is very important in the scouting program and archery, and BB gun range are some of the most important things that Cub Scouts say when they come to Cub Scout Day Camp. My understanding that Camp Kilworth is being closed down by the Pacific Harbors Council, and I'd like to have the support of the City Council to encourage the Pacific Harbor Council to keep it open so that the youth in this community can continue to have a place to go where they can learn outdoor skills, camping, cooking, and shooting sports. Thank you very much.
Thank you, David. Mary Ellis, followed by Dayton Jaskowski.
Hi, I'm here in support of the Cub and Boy Scout members who are once again faced with the closure and loss of Camp Kilworth. Due to financial difficulties, the Pacific Harbor Council has voted to close it on March 4th, 2016. The last time we were here approaching you for assistance about Camp Kilworth was 2005. And at that time, through your directives, you came up with a, a really nice plan that we hoped would go through. But unfortunately, in, in 2009, because the deed reads, and it was deeded over to the Boy Scouts of America by the Kilworts in 1934, and the deed read that if it was ever to be abandoned or taken over by somebody else, that it would go back to the assigns, the heirs, foundations, who's ever then running the property, or running the Kilworth Foundations, and there's two of them. So with that, unfortunately, in 2009, the Supreme Court, for those that don't know, decided that they did not want to set a precedent of allowing that deed to be altered. And they didn't want it, they didn't want it open to other nonprofits being able to do that. So we're back where we were before. So, basically, what we don't know is what the, the Kilworth Foundations will choose to do with the property, if it does revert back to them, and that is the way the deed reads, and the local scout leaders are, have come up with a plan to manage the property themselves. So, through a nonprofit, they are looking at doing that, and they'll tell you more about that themselves. And in the, right now, what they want to do is continue to its use primarily for the Boy Scouts, Cub Scouts, but also for Girl Scouts. They have the church camps there. They also run Boys and Girls Clubs. Schools and other environmental groups can use the property. It's 25 acres and of pristine woodland, high-bank property that is virtually, it's second growth, but it's virtually untouched. And so what they want to do is to continue to teach scouts, scout crafts on the property. So they're gathering support from, or environmental organizations as well. They've also, the dedicated groups here that you see here today are asking for your assistance because there are several issues. And that's, it could be logged. There, they've assessed, the Pacific Harbors Council presented that there is $25,000 value of timber on the property. There's a log, Rotary Lodge there that was built in, in 1936. It does not have historic significance, so we don't know what's going to happen with that. And I'll wrap this up, and it's also been deemed a wildlife corridor between Dash Point State Park and Dumas. So, I thank you for your pass for, and I hope you can help them again. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Dayton, and then Jackson Jacoy.
Hi, I'm Dayton, and my first Cub Scout outing was at Camp Kilworth. And if the council closes Camp Kilworth, then no scout will probably ever have the chance to have their first outing at Camp Kilworth. Now, a lot of scouts and the Boy Scouts have spent precious time and money into this camp. And I think it's important. It's very wonderful to have this wonderful camp because you can camp there. They have wonderful fire pits, and the forest is amazing. When I woke up one time in my tent, I could hear the wonderful birds chirping. It was amazing to come out of the tent and smell the wonderful green life. I loved it amazingly and a lot. It would be sad to see it leave because then some scouts would never have the chance. Fort Phillips is over there. Boy Scouts have built it. It's important. It is what started Camp Kilworth. And if it goes, then down, then to me, down goes scouting. And I don't like that. For me, if Camp Kilworth is gone, so is scouting. Camp Kilworth is the main heart of it. Me and my pack have poured a lot of time and money into it. We fixed up the archery range. We put gravel into it. If the council closes it, then it's all down the drain. I once came to Camp Kilworth, and I saw this wonderful sign built that said Lewis and Clark. It was from these wonderful Boy Scouts. I believe it was from Troop 361. If it is gone, it would be a shame to see it leave. Because that sign has been up there for not too long. And Baiden Palace started scouting for everyone to enjoy. And if Camp Kilworth's gone, then it's hard for scouts to enjoy it. I think once Camp Kilworth is gone, all scouts will be sad. You cannot camp someplace where there's no forest, no place that you can have a little tiny fire, you know, roast marshmallows, scary stories at night, like, like old scouts used to do. It's really hard to have that in, in a different place than a forest. I enjoy Camp Kilworth. Save it.
Great job, Dayton. Thank you very much. He'll be up here before you know it. Jackson Jacoy, and then Warren Nedved.
Hi, my name is Jackson Jacoy. I am with Troop 398. I am here to speak on the behalf of Camp Kilworth. For me, I think that was the right word, but, for me, Camp Kilworth is a very important camp. I've had so many scouting memories. It's where we have retired multiple flags. And we do junior leader training, where we train our future leaders on how to lead better. For me, it's a very important camp, and I think it's very good for scouting in general, especially to have such a nice camp nearby. Because we've gone on campouts and driven hours when, you know, Camp Kilworth is right down there. It's very nice, and I think they should keep it open. Thank you.
Thank you, Warren. Thank you, Jackson. Warren Nedved, and then Brian Tabram.
Thank you, council members. My name is Warren Nedved. I'm here representing me, myself, and I. But I am 20-plus years in the Scouts. My posse here will attest to that. And what I'd like to share with you is just a bit of history, presence of what Kilworth was when it was born. And so, I'm going to let everybody else speak to that, but I wish you well in any judgment that you come to and support. Go 342.
All right, thank you, Warren. Appreciate it.
Take a look, 1934 is what it was.
Okay. Now it's time for Brian Tabram, and then Lucia Faithfull.
Good evening, Mayor Farrell and City Council members. My name is Brian Tabram, and I was born and raised in Federal Way. The experiences I had as both a Cub Scout and Boy Scout at Camp Kilworth have led me to join the effort to save this camp. I'm currently a volunteer leader with Troop 336, the same troop I belonged to as a youth. In 1934, when Tacoma area Boy Scouts had no place to go, William Kilworth bought them a home. Kilworth deeded the camp to the Boy Scouts for the purpose of teaching scoutcraft, cooperation, patriotism, courage, self-reliance, and kindred virtue. Tens of thousands of local youth have benefited from these teachings since the camp opened 82 years ago. The Pacific Harbors Council has recently announced a plan to close four of their five camps in favor of a one-camp plan. As an alternative course of action to closing Camp Kilworth, William Kilworth's purpose for the camp might just lead us to a solution, specifically with cooperation and kindred virtue. With a shared belief in moral excellence and cooperation between the Pacific Harbors Council, the City of Federal Way, and local youth organizations, I'm positive we can explore all potential solutions and find a win-win to keep Camp Kilworth open. Other scout camps across the nation have faced similar financial challenges in recent years. A proven model keeping some of these camps open is the formation of 501(c)(3) nonprofit organizations. This same model was even adopted by our own Pacific Harbors Council to support the Sea Scouts. The Youth Marine Foundation in Tacoma is a 501(c)(3) organization that was formed to operate and maintain the Scout Ship Odyssey and Charles N. Curtis benefiting 150 Sea Scouts. A 501(c)(3) for Camp Kilworth would alleviate the financial burden for the Pacific Harbors Council as this new organization could take over the fundraising, operations, and marketing of the camp. In addition, it would be a goal for this nonprofit to maximize the camp's use by making it available to all youth organizations. With the one-camp plan, the only available camp for Cub Scouts and Boy Scouts will be Camp Thunderbird, located 15 miles west of Olympia on Highway 8. If Camp Kilworth closes, Federal Way and Tacoma area scouts will again, after 82 years, have no place to go. Scouting programs in our community will continue to decline without a property like Camp Kilworth, where youth can learn about scoutcraft, practice leadership, hold events in the Rotary Lodge, and conduct ceremonies in the beautiful Fire Bowl. The Cub Scouts, Boy Scouts, and Girl Scouts here in uniform tonight are all displaying a great deal of courage as they are doing everything possible to save their home. Camp Kilworth belongs to them. We stand before the City Council tonight and respectfully ask for your help, assistance, and partnership in keeping Camp Kilworth open so current and future generations of Federal Way youth can experience William Kilworth's lasting vision of a camp to develop leaders of character. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Lucia Faithfull, and then Erin Asbra.
Thank you, Mayor Farrell, Deputy Mayor Burbidge, and council members. My name is Lucia Faithfull, and I live a few doors away from Camp Kilworth and have been a longtime supporter of keeping Camp Kilworth open for scouting. Camp Kilworth is a valuable asset to the area of scouting, the Federal Way community as a whole, and for those who care about Puget Sound. This 25-acre camp is an environmentally sensitive property with secondary growth trees and abundance of native shrubs and wild fires. There's an eagle's nest, and possibly two, owls and, and wildlife. In 1995, when Federal Way was considering the future of what is now Dumas Bay Refuge, a biologist was commissioned by Federal Way to survey the area. At that time, he concluded that the property and coastline of Camp Kilworth formed a valuable link in the wildlife corridor that runs between Dumas Bay and Dash Point State Park. Were this land to be developed, that would negatively impact the wildlife, the urban forest, and the regional efforts to clean up the already stressed Puget Sound. I am requesting that you, the council, write a letter to the Pacific Harbor Council of the Boy Scouts in support of keeping Camp Kilworth open, allowing the scouts and supporters time to pursue the development of a nonprofit association. Thank you for your time.
Erin Asbra and Christopher Moody.
Thank you, council. I, my name is Erin Asbra, and I am a Girl Scout here in Federal Way, Service Unit 003, but of Girl Scouts of Western Washington. For the last, I got an opportunity to be a Director of Dash Point Day Camp for like five years. My girls have gone through it. My son is in Boy Scouts. He also was able to help out in, at the camp as well. I'm going to read you what it actually has on our website for Dash Point Day Camp. So our Dash Point Day Camp this year is from July 25th to July 29th. Wild, Wild West is the theme. Dash Point Day Camp is 100% volunteer-led camp that emphasizes on girl leadership progression. All the campers are, are, are future leaders. The leadership team is made up of a core staff and programings, and are hard at work at planning a week of fun adventure for... and are hard at work at planning a week of fun adventure for campers. Surrounded by the beauty of Camp Kilworth, campers will participate in activities that will include Girl Scout skills such as archery, songs, knots, knives, fire building, trail signs, and cooking. Day Camp is a great way for girls to explore leadership, build new skills, and participate and teach and learn Girl Scout traditions. Dash Point Day Camp gives girls an opportunity to grow, explore, discover, and excitement of summer day camp. The one great thing that I had the opportunity with this is just watching the girls grow. There was a time even with Day Camp where I stepped in where the Directors like had to go to Germany 49 days before camp, and we're like, okay, let's not have it. I said, no, we have to have it because it's for the girls. Camp Kilworth benefits Boy Scouts as well as Girl Scouts. It's an opportunity, a place where we can actually have the girls from kindergarten up to 12th grade. We have girls that come through the camp, then also come back as adults and lead. And it builds the leadership and the skills. I'm a proud Girl Scout, and I'm sure there's other Girl Scouts in the room as well here to represent Camp Kilworth. And as has been mentioned, we would really gratefully appreciate your opportunity to help us save this camp because otherwise we'd have to have it at Dash Point State Park. And that's not closed. That's open to the public. So I thank you on the opportunity of having me speak today on behalf of Dash Point Day Camp as well as the Boy Scouts here in the room. Thank you.
Christopher Moody, and then Carson Redifer.
There was, there was once this young scout who started off the scouting journey looking up at an Eagle Scout, at an Eagle, obtaining his Eagle badge, Eagle Scout Ceremony at Camp Kilworth. 15 years ago, that was the scout. This is the scout now, who's now getting ready to obtain his Eagle Scout badge, hopefully to hold it at Camp Kilworth. But now, because of our council, Pacific Harbors, wanting to close Camp Kilworth, that may not happen. So now it is up to you, the City Board of Federway, to make that change to support future Eagle Scouts such as myself, the ones I see in this room as the youngest adults, the Cub Scouts, and even the adults and the parents watching their youth grow up to become the adults and future leaders of today and tomorrow. With scouts, it's not just, oh, look, we're gonna have a fire, tell stories. It's about family bonding and showing us who we really are and what we want to learn to help improve the future of tomorrow. Scouts has only, not only taught me basics survival skills, it's taught me to accept anybody for who they are, not just for what they look like. It's taught me how to survive, how to make friends with anybody, and most has brought me closer to my community and given me a family, not just related by blood. To me, scouting is a, something if I had a choice to do again, I would. I would attain my Eagle Scout faster and harder and find a way to benefit the community even more. Kilworth has helped reinforce that for the people I have learned and for the people I hope to teach at the future through scouting when I'm an adult to help pass on this grateful tradition through my family. Thank you.
Thank you, Christopher. Now it's time for Carson Redifer, and then Bob Woolley.
So I'm Carson Redifer from Troop 398, and I'm here to speak on behalf of Camp Kilworth. So Camp Kilworth, it was the first, I think it was my first Boy Scout, or Cub Scout camp I went to. I had a lot of fun time there. I learned how to bond with my dad more than I used to. I made great memories. That was where I had my last ceremony before I passed over to Boy Scouts. And it's inspired my becoming of an Eagle Scout. I, I've been working as hard as I can to earn my trail to Boy Scout. It's, I don't, I honestly don't think Camp Kilworth should be shut down because a lot of the scouts that are getting ready to become a Boy Scout should have their ceremony there because you're just looking into the view over the water, and you're like, this couldn't get any better. And that's how I felt on my last day before being a Boy Scout. And there, my dad, he was a Cub Master, and so I remember him tearing up because he was sad of us moving on, and he had a great time teaching us scout skills and how to become a better citizen. And my dad, he's still a big part of Boy Scouts with me and my troop. And it's a great place to have like any meetings or outings there. Thank you.
Thank you, Carson. Thank you, Carson. Good job. Alright, Mr. Bob Woolley.
Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Councilman, Councilman Copeng. I was a Cub Scout. I was a Boy Scout. These fellows who've come up and spoken to the council on the night deserve a merit badge for citizenship. To the scouts, don't ever forget what you did tonight because it will stand you in good stead in the rest of your life by willing to speak up and voice your opinion. Council, I've been a resident of Federway for 30 years. I've been a resident in Twin Lakes for 30 years. I'm a resident of Lake Gene in Twin Lakes. I'm a member of the Twin Lakes Golf Club. I'm a member of the Twin Lakes HOA Association. Most of the folks that come and make a presentation, it's laudatory, often asking for support. I'm here to tell you that Lake Gene, which is a part of Federway and the citizens that live on Lake Gene have pursued all private matters in bringing a solution to Lake Gene. I have been asked not to bring it public. I'm here to bring it public. This is a meeting in the middle of February. We will be back at the end of February, the 1st of March. We will be back in mid-March. We will be back in mid-summer with a request for a lake management district to be created as a means of solving the Lake Gene problem. The Lake Gene problem for the folks out here is, for three years, our lake has been toxic with blue-green algae and has not been treated. The residents have been asked to live with the lake because the lake is owned by the Twin Lakes Golf Club. Its sister lake, Lake Lorraine, the upper lake, is owned by the HOA. The HOA has been very proactive and a good shepherd for their lake. The residents that live on Lake Gene and the club are at loggerheads, and we cannot come to a mutually agreed solution, and we're at the verge of a lawsuit to bring resolution. My appeal to the council is that this is not a private matter. It's a public health matter that needs the attention of the council because we do not have a willingness by the other side of the issue to come to common grips with it. We will be back, and we will be deliberate.
Bob, let's add, I think he speaks for more than five people. Can we add two minutes to his time? Go ahead, Bob. Go ahead and finish your thought. We're gonna add two more minutes.
Okay, I appreciate that. I was gonna give you a scenario of what is public and what is private. I won't deal in that scenario, but we have had two significant staff actions come through the city to address the Lake Gene effort. Dan Smith worked very cooperatively with us in bringing resolution to one of those issues, and Dan is no longer an employee of the city. But my commendation to him is deserved. The second issue was worked by Will Appleton. Will Appleton bent over backwards to accommodate us and bring our issue to the city. The pronouncement was, it's a private issue. I'm a member of a golf club. I play golf. I enjoy playing golf. A private matter between the residents on Lake Gene, which are mandatory members of the club, the golf club, a private matter is if we had an issue with how much dues we pay. That's a private issue. Another private issue would be, do we get to play golf 12 times a year, or do we get to play golf 24 times a year? That is a private issue. What is not a private issue is if you are required to live on a toxic lake for three years with the expectation that you're gonna live on another summer season on a toxic lake. A toxic lake. Lake Gene was in the top five lakes for toxic algae of the 261 lakes in the state. It was the highest in two weeks. The point I'm making is we need a partner with the City Council and the city to help us resolve this resident solution process that we're in the midst of. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Bob. Bob, I'll have my Chief of Staff call you in the morning, or call you tomorrow sometime, and we'll talk, we'll follow up with this issue. Alright?
Let me make, Stephanie has been very cooperative. She has my telephone numbers if she needs.
We got them right here. Alright, thank you very much, Bob.
Thank you.
Alright. Daniel McClurg, and then Elijah.
Hi, my name's Daniel McClung. I'm speaking on behalf of Camp Kilworth. I came, I went to Camp Kilworth my first time when I was in Cub Scouts. It was really awesome, and we, my Cub Scout Troop, Troop 3, my Boy Scout Troop, Troop 398, was planning on going to Camp Ahobus, but due to this, these issues, we weren't able to because it was closed. And so now we don't want, and so now we have to go to one that's not in our council at all, that's not near us. And so it's really hard for, to have like another one of our camps closed that we really enjoyed going to. So I just want that camp to stay open.
Alright. Good job. Thank you, Daniel. Elijah. Elijah, what's your last name?
Bilyeu.
Nice to meet you. Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Elijah Bilyeu, and I'm a member of PAC 318, WeBlows2 Scout. And I would just like to say that I really enjoy having Twilight Camp at Camp Kilworth, and it's a really great place to learn how to shoot BB guns and how to do archery and all that. Also, I really love the views there. Like you get a view of the bay and also the Olympic Mountain Range. And while it's really nice, and closing it down, it would just like, it would just like be like a natural disaster happening and destroying a city or something. And while I really like Camp Kilworth, and it would be really sad if the Pacific Harbor Council closed it. And so, thank you.
Great job, Elijah. Alright. Rick Nicholson, and Lynn Harper. Nicholson, sorry.
Oh, that's okay. Hi, I'm Rick Nicholson. I'm representing the homeless on their behalf regarding some camp involvement with the city. I have talked to the homeless that are living in the woods. They agreed to pick up the litter in their camps, clean it up. The thing about it is what they were requesting is garbage cans. They do not want it left out on the sidewalks. They request garbage cans to be presented to them on the entrance to their, through the camps where they will dispose of the garbage can liners and the garbage if it is all possible, if the city can see it that way. That's what I'm here and requesting on behalf of the homeless. So I thank you for your time.
Alright, thank you, Rick. Alright, Rick, if you can, if you can hang out for a little while, we've got our Community Development Director here, Michael Morales. I believe we've got another person that's gonna speak on this issue. Maybe he can speak to both of you at the conclusion of a public comment about this issue. Alright, and some of the issues surrounding that. Lynn Harper, followed by Michael Gula.
Good evening. My name is Lynn Harper, and I've been homeless for 90 days now. I live in my car. I don't make messes. I don't bother anybody. Today, some man knocked on my door and I told him to go away. And the police told me that I could be arrested because I'm homeless. That's a scary thought. I didn't know I was breaking the law. And if I'm breaking the law, I'm trying to do the best I can. I'm on a fixed income. I pay my bills. I don't make messes. I don't cause trouble. But today, a man knocked on my window and I told him to go away. 10 seconds later, the cops are at my door of my car, asking me, why am I sleeping in my car? Why ain't I in the shelter? I can't get on the floor. I have bad knees and bad ankles and a bladder problem. So that doesn't work for me. I bought a car with the last of my money so I could live in a home, a mobile home. So I have a dog. She's very little, but she's mine. I'm asking you guys to please help us. I had an apartment. It was $700 when I moved in five years ago. Now it's up to $1100 for the same apartment. They put it cosmetically, they make it look brand-new. Inside, it had black mold. It was falling down. They wouldn't paint. They wouldn't repair. They didn't let it get destroyed, and then they blame us. And that's why I'm homeless. I worked for a living for all my life. Between babysitting, driving a cab, being a chef, I have degrees, but I'm homeless. Not all of us are drug addicts. Not all of us are vets that aren't being taken care of that way. But all of us are moms, grandmothers, and sisters and brothers. And I'm out there, and I'm watching, and I'm learning every day about people and how they handle their lives. Mine, I stay in my car, I take care of my dog, and I clean up around me. But today was scary because somebody knocked on my door, and I told him to go away. And 10 seconds later, the cops telling me I can get a ticket, I can be arrested for trespassing, and I wasn't doing nothing but minding my own business. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. Michael J. Gilla.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I guess I'm here to address some issues and ask for a date and time to address some issues about homelessness and how to resolve that in the Federway area. I was born in Tacoma and lived in Auburn, South County in Federway. And I happen to be homeless. So that's all I have to say about that until the next meeting.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Michael. Thank you very much, Michael. Lynn Lang.
Long.
Long, sorry. I should have put my glasses on.
That's okay. My name is Lynn Long, and I am a Girl Scout leader, a Girl Scout mom, a Cub Scout mom, a Cub Scout leader, and also a Boy Scout mother as present. The clerk should have given you a copy of the Killworth deed for your reference, and I'm also going to give you an address to write to Mr. Ralph Bullard, who is the, the council executive for Pacific Harbor Council. He had decided on December 16th, 2015, that Camp Killworth was going to close along with three other camps, and also actively pursue getting it off their property's records for the Pacific Harbor Council. That's when the Friends of Camp Killworth came into play. We decided that we did not want this camp to close, that we wanted it to stay opened because it has been such a meaningful camp for us all. It's a pristine piece of property that we've seen scouts from all over the Puget Sound corridor use, that have spent money in our city for hotels perhaps, gas, and food. Also, other organizations have used it, like I said, Girl Scouts, church groups have all been a part of this. And what we're trying to achieve with forming this association, Friends of Camp Killworth, the 501(c)(3), is that we're trying to make it so it is run by the scouts in the area who have the most vested interest in the camp. And it would be primarily run by the scouts. The board would be made up mostly of Boy Scouts. However, it would also include maybe a Girl Scout member, also some community members in the area. And then we would run it through the nonprofit, through grants, to help fund the programs and to help it to succeed. Pacific Harbor Council in the past years have not had a real vested interest in our camp of promoting it. So we are asking the council if they will hopefully tell the Pacific Harbor Council that we want to have this camp remain open, which would give us the time that we need to find, to get the 501(c)(3) together so we could make this all work for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. We believe we have another letter on Camp Killworth by Randall Smith. Would you please hand that down for our clerk to read?
Letter reads, Mayor Farrell and Council, in regards to the recent discussion regarding Camp Killworth, I would like to encourage each of you to do what is within your power to preserve the natural habitat that adds to the beauty of our city. One solution I was asked to be considered would involve the Parks and Recreation Commission, the mayor's office, and council. Is there an opportunity that the city could have the land donated or a long-term agreement, non-financial lease where the city takes over the upkeep? My fear is that the land will be sold to commercial developers, and there are indications that this property is being scoped out just for that. We need to make sure that we maintain a balance in our city and not overdevelop here in our backyard. That will only ruin the current quality of life we all enjoy. More housing in the area of Dash Point Road will only lead to further traffic congestion. Thank you for this opportunity, Randall Smith.
All right, thank you. I want to let everybody know that we just finalized the agenda for our council retreat. Remember during my report, I talked about that we're having the council retreat this coming Saturday? This is one of the items that is on the agenda for consideration and discussion by the council during the debate, so, or during the retreat. So we would encourage you to, for those who have not provided their comments, send us emails, call the council, whatever, if you want to, let us know your position. I think we have been well aware of this as it's been developing, and we've been in communication. In fact, my chief of staff has been in communication with the representative of the Boy Scouts. Brian, do you have anything to add as far as where we're at right now?
Just the comments tonight have been very helpful in terms of the council and some of the action that's been taken, and would encourage those who have jurisdiction and decision-making over the camp and the property itself to contact the mayor's office and to give us that direct information will be very helpful as we research options for the mayor and council to consider.
Okay. All right. That is actually all the public comments I have. Thank you all very much for your attendance this evening. Councilor, would you close?
I just want to ask a clarification question about Lake Gene.
Lake Gene.
And, and Lake Gene and the toxic waste.
Yes.
Can they form a separate management district to, to take care of that?
Amy Jo.
There is a process on how to create a lake management district, and it's actually complicated. I can provide that information to council, but it's, it's not a straightforward process.
Well, I happen to have a house on a lake, not here, but out, out in the ocean, and we had the same problem with that toxic. And we actually were able to get control of the lake, and we took care of that weed, and that lake is pristine now. And the fish are thriving, and you can get trout, and you can take the fish and cook it and everything else. So I think anything we might be able, any kind of help we could provide to these people or guidance on how they could go about doing that, I think we should try to do.
And Mr. Bob Willie said it absolutely right, is that the Twin Lakes Golf and Country Club owns the land underneath the lake. The water column is actually owned by the state of Washington. And so the Department of Ecology has been well aware of, of this situation and, and has been consulted, and the Public Health Department has been consulted. So we're, our staff has been.
I'm glad to see that. I think we need to put pressure on them though, because that weed will kill the lake. And if you, you can treat it without doing any harm to anything else but that weed. And, and I think it's something that really we ought to get behind and try to help as much as possible.
I think the management, just, you know, I'm, I'm, it's, I, I think the management of the Twin Lakes Golf and Country Club disagrees in regard to the, the treatment route and whether it would be a short-term or a long-term solution. So there's a, there's a disagreement between the, the people that own the land and the people that live on the lake.
Well, you know, again, my, I would encourage them to talk to some other lakes that have already done this. It, it takes two or three seasons, and we haven't had to do anything more after that.
All right, thank you. All right. Okay, thank you, everybody, for coming. This was a great turnout, and we really appreciate all your testimony. All right, now moving on to the consent agenda, and actually to the scouts, to all the scouts that were here, I think I speak for everybody up here. You guys did a great job. Let's give them a big round of applause. All right, thank you. Okay, now moving on to the consent agenda. These items have actually already gone through committee. They can be passed in total with one vote. I'll go ahead and read them and then ask for a motion. Item five, consent agenda. Item A, the minutes for the February 2nd, 2016 special and regular meeting. Item B, Sacagawea Middle School Safe Route to School, 30% Design Status Report. Item C, South 356th Street, Pacific Highway South to Enchanted Parkway Improvement Project, Schedule 74, Undergrounding Agreement with Puget Sound Energy. Item D, grant funding for transportation improvement projects, authorization to submit an application. Item E, Citywide Flashing Yellow Arrow Retrofits Project Bid Award. Item F, Authorization to Accept King County Regional Waste Water Treatment Division Water Quality Improvement Grant Award and Enter into All Necessary Agreements. Item G, Authorization to Apply for the 2017 King County Conservation Futures Fund Program. Item H, Pete Von Reich Bar Way South, 20th Avenue South and South 316th Street Sidewalk Replacement Project Contract Award as a Change Order to the PAC project. Item I, Pharo, Total Station and Automatic License Plate Readers ALPR Maintenance Agreement. Item J, Regency Cleaners Amendment for Number One, for Police Uniforms and Dry Cleaning. Item K, Second Amendment for Parking Lot Vacuuming Services. Item L, Use of Excess Replacement Reserves. Item N, 2016 Parks and Recreation Commission Work Plan, or Program, or Plan. Item N, PSE Electrical Extension Agreement and New Service for Town Square Park. Item O, Field Turf USA Retainage Release. Deputy Mayor Burbidge, do you have a motion?
I do, thank you. I move approval of items A through O on the consent agenda. Second?
All right, it's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. All right, now moving on to council business, reappointment to North Lake Management District Committee. Councilmember Maloney.
Thank you. I move the following reappointments to the North Lake Management District Advisory Committee with terms expiring March 15, 2018. Charles Gibson, Mary McClellan Aronin, Aaronin, sorry about that, Mary, Mary, Brian Cleary, Terrence, and Terrence Thomas II.
All right, it's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of those appointments?
Aye.
Opposed? Matter passes unanimously. All right. Ordinances, first reading, Council Bill Number 702, Lake Haven Utility District Franchise Agreement. First, we'll have a staff report from Amy Jo Pierceall, our city attorney, and then we'll ask the city clerk to read the ordinance title. Amy Jo.
Good evening. You have before you an ordinance that will create a new franchise agreement with the Lake Haven Utility District. Just for a little bit of background, state statute permits the city to grant non-exclusive franchises for the use of public rights-of-way for public and private facilities for public use. Lake Haven PUD is one of the city's franchisees. We've had franchises with them in the past. The current franchise has expired, and over the past year, the city's negotiated the terms of a new franchise agreement with Lake Haven Utility District. So just to go through some of the key terms in this franchise agreement, it is, does have a 10-year term with two possible five-year extensions if both Lake Haven and the city are amenable to those extensions. The city will take responsibility for fire hydrant and streetlight payments that were previously billed to Lake Haven to its ratepayers. Lauded change within the past few years that fire hydrants are a general government function that the city needs to pay for. In the past, we have waived any sort of franchise fee in exchange for them continuing to maintain those. This will set that right. We will pay for the fire hydrants as we're supposed to, and in exchange, we have created a franchise fee that I'll discuss in just a moment. Also in this franchise, during the terms of this particular franchise, the city is agreeing to not initiate any proceedings to assume Lake Haven. And then as I intimated before, Lake Haven will pay the city a franchise fee for consideration for the rights granted to Lake Haven, Lake Haven under the franchise as follows. For the years between 2016 and 2019, it will be 3.6% of their revenues. Between 2020 and 2023, it will be 3.8%. And then from 2024 to 2026, it will be 4%. So those are the key terms of the franchise. The mayor is recommending approval of the proposed ordinance to grant Lake Haven a franchise to install, operate, and maintain its water and sewer systems within the city's rights-of-way. I'm available for any questions if you have any.
Counsel, any questions? Councilor Joseph Dawson.
Yeah, thank you. My question is around the boundary of the water system and the sewer system, I guess, on the map. Can you explain to me why they're different? Would you be able to?
Well, they're, the way that their system is set, what, what they own, they don't necessarily own the, the same system in the same places. So there are other, we have agreements with other providers in different parts of the city. Like we do have a franchise agreement with Tacoma Water. They provide some of the water in the north end. So where their systems are, and it's just a, a function of what they own.
Okay, thank you. That is.
Councilmember Honda.
Thank you. That's my name. On the fire hydrant and streetlights that we will be paying for, that, will there be an increase of fees to the ratepayers? How would that work since we, as a ratepayer, we've been paying for that?
So for the fire hydrants, there, it shouldn't look any different. There's no, as far as I know, I could be wrong, a line item for fire hydrants. The streetlights, however, has been a direct pass-through to customers, and so in the future, you shouldn't see that on your bill. Rather, PSE will bill the city directly.
Thank you.
Okay, council, any other questions? This represents a lot of work. Thank you very much, Amy Jo. Appreciate it. And I know, as I, the person who actually did our flagship when we started, Mr. Lynn England, who's a Lake Haven Commissioner is here as well. So thank you very much for being here, Lynn. All right, seeing no questions, would the city clerk please read the ordinance title?
Council Bill 702, Lake Haven Utility District Franchise Agreement, An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Federal Way, Washington, granting Lake Haven Utility District, a municipal corporation, a non-exclusive franchise to occupy the rights-of-way of the City of Federal Way, Washington, through the franchise area for the purposes of constructing, maintaining, repairing, renewing, and operating a water and sewer system within and throughout the City of Federal Way and addressing hydrant costs within city boundaries.
All right. Councilmember Dukola, do you have a motion?
Yes, I move to forward the proposed ordinance to the March 1st council meeting for second reading and enactment.
Seconded.
All right, it's been moved in second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Matter passes unanimously. Thank you again, Amy Jo. Okay, now moving on to Council Bill 703, 21st Avenue South, 316th to South 320th Street, Pedestrian Improvements Condemnation Ordinance. First, we'll have a staff report from Christine Mullin, the PE, Street Systems Project Engineer, and then we'll have the city clerk read the ordinance title. Evening, Christine.
All right, good evening. As you said, I'm here tonight to discuss the condemnation ordinance for the 21st Avenue South Pedestrian Improvement Project. The question for you tonight is should the council approve an ordinance that authorizes the city attorney to commence legal proceedings to acquire the necessary property for the 21st Avenue South Pedestrian Improvements by condemnation if the negotiation process fails? Previously, the council authorized staff to acquire the right-of-way for the project for the fair market value, and we have sent out offer letters and have been working on negotiating the purchase of the required strip takes. We've been working on that process since last fall in September. This ordinance authorizes the city attorney to commence legal proceedings to acquire the necessary property by condemnation, and this allows the project to proceed forward towards construction. This is the list of affected properties. In this case, there is only a single property that is affected by this project. It's the property owned by NWCC Center Plaza. It's formerly known as the former Kratzenberg Parcel to many people. The options before council are, one, to approve to send the condemnation ordinance for the 21st Avenue South from South 316th Street to South 320th Street, pedestrian improvements to the city council meeting on March 1st for the second reading. Or option two is do not approve to send the condemnation ordinance for the 21st Avenue South from South 316th to South 320th Street, pedestrian improvements to the city council meeting on March 1st for the second reading, and provide direction to staff. And the mayor's recommendation is to approve to send the condemnation, condemnation ordinance to the city council meeting on March 1st for the second reading. Any questions?
Counsel, any questions?
Yeah, I'm just trying to refresh my memory.
Yeah, microphone.
Sorry, thank you. Can you refresh my memory on the process that you went through on this and what the sticking point is?
We have presented an offer. We've worked with a right-of-way negotiator, and they appraised the property, came up with a fair market value for it. We have approached the property owner multiple times, presented the offer to them. They've actually completed an independent appraisal, and the amount that they're coming up with is significantly different than what we have offered. So this is the next step, usually is to proceed with the condemnation. In the talks we've had with the property owner, that's actually the process he would like to take us to next because we are so far apart in the values.
Okay, counsel, any other questions? Counselor, come back.
As far as compensation for this property, if it is, if it is condemned, is there compensation for the owner of the property?
Yes, we have offered, this shows here, $295,000 for the.
So that would, okay.
And is that the fair market value?
Yes. And showing here on the map, the, the project, the green line there is the pedestrian improvements that are proposed, a sidewalk there along the east side of Town Square Park, and then along that parcel, and the yellow is the area that's in question.
Thank you for clarifying that. I think for the layman, they might think condemned means they don't get anything.
No, it's just, I believe it's a, it's a 12. No, it's just, I believe it's a, it's a 12-foot strip along the front edge for proposed sidewalk and retaining all other ordinance.
Christine, what was the counteroffer?
1.4 million.
Okay. I just want to make sure. So about six times the fair market value?
Yes.
Okay, or maybe five?
Yeah.
Okay, somewhere in that.
Yeah.
A lot.
Yeah, we're not exactly close there.
And that's why, if we can, if we can come to an agreement without condemning this, would we do that?
Oh, yes, yeah. And we've met with the property owner several times, and he's very supportive of the project. We just financially aren't quite close.
And we are actually really excited we bought this property. It's just this, this one, just this one piece of business we got to take care of. Councilmember Moore, you didn't have a question? Okay, I just want to make sure that, you know, we don't do this, I think when people hear the word condemnation, and thank you Chair Maloney, she chairs our Land Use Committee, we don't do this, you know, just willy-nilly. We, you know, we only do this when we absolutely have to for the benefit of the overall public, so.
Yes.
There will be just compensation, a fair market value. Okay, counsel, any other questions? All right. All right, thank you, Christine, great job. Would the city clerk please read the ordinance title?
Council Bill 703, 21st Avenue South, South 316th to South 320th Street, Pedestrian Improvements Condemnation Ordinance, An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Fudroway, Washington, Providing for the Acquisition of Certain Property for the Purpose of Constructing Right-of-Way Improvements in the Vicinity of 21st Avenue South, South 316th Street to South 320th Street, Known as the 21st Avenue South Pedestrian Improvements Project. Describing the Public Use and Necessity of Such Property, Directing Staff to Exhaust Reasonable Negotiation Efforts to Purchase Such Property, Providing for the Condemnation of the Property, and Directing the City Attorney to Initiate All Necessary Actions and Proceedings in the Manner Provided by Law for Side Condemnation If Attempts to Purchase the Property Are Not Successful.
All right, thank you. Would Councilmember Maloney, do you have a motion?
Yes, thank you. I move to forward the proposed condemnation ordinance to the March 1st, 2016 council meeting for second reading and enactment. Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Matter passes unanimously. All right, now we have the second reading on item C, Council Bill 701, Ordinance of the Mayor Sewer Franchise, and it's not Mayor OR, that's Mayor MAYER, just in case anybody's curious. The Mayor Sewer Franchise. Would the city clerk please read the ordinance title?
Council Bill 701, Ordinance Mayor Sewer Franchise, An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Fudroway, Washington, Granting Joseph E. Mayer, Pamela R. Mayer, and Natalie A. Mayer, A Non-Exclusive Franchise to Occupy Rights-of-Way of the City of Fudroway, Washington, Within the Specified Franchise Area to Construct, Maintain, Repair, Operate, and Remove a Private Sewer Line Within and Through Specified Rights-of-Way and Streets Within the City of Fudroway.
All right, Councilmember DuKlo.
Yes, I move approval of the proposed ordinance.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Matter passes unanimously. All right, now on to council reports. Let's start with Councilmember DuKlo.
Thank you. I'm going to make everybody happy because I really don't have a report tonight, other than to say the next meeting of the Finance, Economic Development, and Regional Affairs Committee is next Tuesday at 4:30 in the Friends of the Hala Bos Room, and I invite all of you to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Moore?
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. A quick little report, want to cover up on homelessness, Camp Kilworth, methanol plant, and a thank you to King County, and talk about Heart's History and Chocolate. So I'm glad to see our homeless advocates, homeless individuals coming up. You can't, the best people to share the stories are homeless individuals themselves. And I know that Len spoke from the heart. I know that I've served her dinner on the Monday night caregiver's suppers, and it's good to see her out here. It's really good to see Rick as well out here, but it's, it's very powerful to hear people straight from the hearts. And I know that I'm looking forward and working with Councilmember Lydia Safadassan and Mark Copain in addressing homelessness. I think there's a lot of solutions we can do, and I'm glad to see the King County taking steps in saying that homelessness is a problem. I'm glad to see the city of Seattle saying that homelessness is a problem. So, and quite frankly, I'm glad that Fudroway has been a good player in addressing a lot of that, but more can be done. And so we're going to work on the how, and we're going to work towards solutions as well. At least that'll be my personal goal. Camp Kilworth, I had a chance to do a tour about a week or two ago, and again, I know I talked about it about two weeks ago, but it's a great piece of land, and I'm going to do everything I can to protect the land and make sure that it's good for future generations. So to the Boy Scouts and Cub Scouts that are still here, thank you for sticking it out, and I appreciate it. Thank you for being leaders and advocating for something that's so important. Thank you for being good stewards of our environment as well. So a lot of work needs to be done, and I'm glad to see a broad coalition of people coming together, and I'm looking forward to the February 20th council retreat. And I know that Councilmember Honda has been working on this issue as well, and others that may not be aware of, but I'm looking forward to teaming up and solving this and being a partner, and that's what it's about in the end. And the methanol plant, I'm glad that we took serious action at an early stage. It affects many of the neighbors of Tacoma. I'm not going to go too deep into that, but I'm glad that we're, that we've acted, and I'm glad to have played a role in that. As I stated earlier, just wanted to say publicly, thank you to King County Executive Dow Constantine and King County Councilmembers, and for approving $40,000 that was announced last Monday for the day shelter project. So I'm glad to see, it's really incredible to see the local, the county, and the state playing critical roles. Now we just need to get the federal government. I don't know if that's possible or not, but nothing's impossible, in my opinion. So this, it's great to see a lot of people coming together to address and see the day shelter come to vitalization. And Heart's History and Chocolate, that was a fun event. I attended that last Saturday, and it was just, it was amazing, just having some chocolates and just listening to the stories of Redondo, and I believe it was just Redondo that was covered, I'm not sure, because I came in the latter part. But what amazed me is that it brought people to that event that had some sort of relationship with Redondo, and that's what was so cool, just to listen to that and hear the reactions. So thank you to the Historical Society for doing great work and putting that event together. Look forward to next year's. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Copain.
Tell you, as a member of the council, it's really an honor for me to be able to use what little influence I have as a member here to, to effect change and have, be able to meet with people and the community that are trying to make, move things forward and make a difference. And I had a chance to meet with Bob Woolley and Don Smith about the Lake Gene issue, and I think that it's really, I really am gratifying to me to see somebody that's passionate about something take a reasoned and considered approach to solving a problem. And I wanted to commend you for that, Bob, and for your testimony tonight. Had a chance to, to attend an MSC donor appreciation dinner, and been happy to support the MSC, and like, continue to see them do the good work that they're doing. I think we've seen with the one-night count that we definitely have some issues here in Fudroway that need to be addressed, and that's an organization that continues to be on the front line in our community, making a difference. So just really appreciate all their efforts. And on a more personal note, on Valentine's Day, my wife and I had the pleasure of enjoying a couple of our parks. And I, you know, I talk about that just because we really have so many gems in this city. But we went, went down to Pudumis Bay and walked the grounds there, and just got to see the sculptures, and had been to events that really had not spent a considerable amount of time there, and that really is a beautiful area. And as I, as I, we continued to walk the grounds, noticed that the stairway down to the beach is closed, and a friend of, friend of mine had mentioned that, and it'd be great to see that opened again, but to see, to get down to the beach. But then we went around to, I can't remember the name of the park now, it's the other end of the bay, and we actually got to go down a nice gradual path, nice wide path through beautiful trees down to the beach, and got to enjoy the bay from the other end. So again, we've got some gems in this city that need to be enjoyed, and I hope that everyone in this community can, can make it to our parks and really enjoy the treasures that they are. But thank you.
All right, thank you. One of the things we learned on Saturday at the Historical Society function with the chocolates was about how Redondo had actually been an area where the entire Puget Sound would come to for access to the beach, right, at that area. So that was kind of interesting historically, talking about access to the water, as far back as, as long as this area's been settled. Councilmember Honda?
Thank you. I'd like to thank the Historical Society also for the event on Saturday, and the chocolates in the back, in the front of the room are from the Historical Society, from the event on, on Saturday, and they're chocolate hearts, and thank you very much for the donation. I will be attending a Board of Health meeting on Thursday, and homelessness is something that the Board of Health is talking about on a very routine basis. I attended a fundraising event with several other people on Friday morning at 6:30 in Auburn, for Auburn Youth Resources. They are working with youth 24 and under that are homeless, that have other needs, and they are a resource that is invaluable to our city. And to the scouts and to Camp Kilworth, the City of Fudroway and Camp Kilworth have something in common. February 28th, it's our birthday as a city, and it's the day that the deed was signed in 1934 for Camp Kilworth. So it's an important date, and it'll link us forever together. It's very important. You love history? I thought, bring that out, it's right there in the deed. I'd like to thank the scouts for coming today and for the neighbors who live in the area. My boys have been at Camp Kilworth. I've walked the paths there many times. Excuse me, my husband has been very involved in scouting, and the ideal for Camp Kilworth is that it stays with the scouts. And if that doesn't happen, then we need to come up with options to keep it in our community and to keep it as a camp. It's, it's, it's just too special to let anything else happen to it. And then I'd like to talk about the Warehouser sale. So I, I speak about the sale from a little bit of a different viewpoint than some other people. My husband's been employed by the company for about 37 or 38 years now, and it's been a good company to work for, and it continues to be a good company to work for. So I'd like to welcome IRG to Fudroway, and I'd just like to tell them a little bit about Fudroway and about Warehouser. So Fudroway is a really wonderful place. It's a great place to live, work, and play, and I wouldn't want to live anywhere else than Fudroway. But at this time, I want to thank the Warehouser Company for coming here in 1971, because in 1971, Fudroway was, I lived in Bronze Point, and what I knew about Fudroway, besides the fact that we came to shop here and sometimes saw a doctor or a dentist in Fudroway, was that it was a place where school, levies, and bonds were not being passed. In Tacoma, where I went to school, they were passing bonds, and so our schools were okay. In Fudroway, it was known as an area where that wasn't happening. And the Warehouser Company left Tacoma and came to Fudroway in 1971. And I don't know what our city would be if they hadn't taken that step to come here, because when they built this building, you can show that picture anywhere, and businesses will know that it's Warehouser headquarters in Fudroway, Washington, because there's nothing anywhere else in the world like it. And so thank you to the company for, for being here and for being a good partner to the city and to the residents for all those years. The flagpole that flies over the Warehouser grounds, as you can see in the picture, is a single Douglas furlong, and it's 120 feet, which I think is just kind of cool. Warehouser has had a group of employees that are volunteers in the community called Wave, and if you've been out at events, you'll see them in their green t-shirts, and I think it's blue writing. We have one in our closet, I should have looked at it today. But over the years, this group of volunteers has done many things for Fudroway. A partial list includes communities and schools, Fusion, the Multi-Service Center, the Boys and Girls Club, the Fudroway Community Gardens, World Vision, the Technology Access Foundation. They have been involved in advancing leadership, and the Chamber of Commerce. And so over the last years that the company's been here, they've done many things for our community. And so I think we're a better community because the company's been here. And I know that this new company that has bought the property is going to do an even greater job. I look forward to the changes that will occur, and I say that hoping that not a whole lot of changes occur to this picture that we see, because I love the meadows. But I know the change will occur. Change is scary. I've had residents calling me because they're concerned and they're worried about what might happen, and no one really knows what might happen. You know, the company will come in and they'll decide what's best for the company and, and what's best for the community. And so who knows what will happen in the next year, next 10 years, next 20 years, but Fudroway's growing, and we're moving, and we're changing, and it'll be exciting to see what happens. So thank you.
Councilmember Maloney?
Thank you very much. And just to tag on to that discussion briefly about Warehouser, my father-in-law, before I even knew him, used to come to Fudroway to do business from, from the Chicago area to do business at Warehouser, and he has fond memories of coming here. So that's, that's, I just, I love that connection, that this is where I ended up, because he did a great deal of work here. And Councilmember Honda mentioned some, many of the programs that Warehouser was involved in, and the ones that I specifically participated in through some aspect with Warehouser were advancing leadership, communities and schools, the Fudroway Chamber, and the Multi-Service Center. So, you know, and she talked about more than that, but, you know, they, they really were a corporation that reached into our community, and I just want to appreciate what you have been saying, that we need to appreciate this organization as, even as they're living, leaving the community. And also just to touch briefly on the change that, that Councilmember Honda mentioned, I just want to acknowledge that there is zoning in place already, and so there are, there is going to be a lot of change, but hopefully, you know, the zoning will mitigate some of the fears that some of the people have. I too have heard from some people about concerns, and, you know, I, I don't know where this is going to end up, but hopefully the zoning will keep some of that in check. Okay, so the things that I've been involved in in the last couple of weeks include a very interesting meeting for the university initiative that I won't go into detail in, but, on, but we had a, a full cadre of people there, including the mayor and deputy mayor Jean Burbidge, and some staff as well, and it went really well. And I think that we are continuing to move forward on this initiative. We still don't know exactly who our partner will be. We still are working, the staff and the mayor are working hard on the needs assessment, but it's moving forward, and I'm very excited about the potential of this initiative. Last week, I did get very involved in, I shouldn't say very involved, but I did participate in the Tacoma event on the methanol plant, and along with Councilmember Honda spoke and expressed my concern about something that we really didn't know anything about, as the mayor mentioned earlier. We had no, not been notified formally from the city or the port, and so we had grave concerns. And so I really appreciate that the mayor and the rest, the other council members, and especially the city staff, that they came together in a really record amount of time, a short amount of time, to put together the emergency meeting and a resolution that was really comprehensive and gave us a voice, gave our city, our citizens, a voice in that EIS process, which is essential because we don't know what yet, what the impacts are, and we need to be able to say, you know, have you considered this, or you have, you considered that, whatever the case may be. And I think that by moving quickly, we were able to do that, and as the mayor mentioned, we will continue to stay close to that. I'm also very excited about the rebranding initiative. It was great to see Rusty George here and hear from him as this initiative finally, can I say finally, gets going. It's just so exciting, and it will definitely lead to the city having a different, you know, potentially a different image, or one that, we all know what a great community, community we have here. It'll help others understand why we love to, you know, call Fudroway home. And then I want to, I want, I know that, the last thing I have is the retreat. We have the one-night count listed on the agenda. I don't know if we're going to have time to get into the details of the homelessness issue in terms of solutions. I know there have been some things floating around, but if we don't, I would like to request have been some things floating around, but if we don't, I would like to request that we have a work study on this issue, to see if we can coalesce some ideas in order to kind of get our arms around it. So that's just a suggestion, if we don't have time to really get into it at the retreat. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Counselmember Saffadassin?
Thank you. I too want to thank the kids who spoke this morning, I mean, earlier today. You guys are amazing. I don't think anybody your age is as brilliant and as articulate as you guys are, so I just want to say, continue doing that, congratulations, and thank you for sharing your passion and what you think about this place. I was really impressed. And among other things that I was able to participate in on Friday morning, like you said, we were at the Auburn Youth Resources fundraising at 6:30 in the morning, and something that was really key there that gave me goosebumps was one of the kids who was in the shelter talked about her experience around employment, and that she couldn't find employment because of her homelessness, or she wasn't able to get interviews. But something they did that was really powerful and meaningful was when the business owners there were asked if they're willing to hire, or employ, or give homeless people a chance, at least give them an interview, or at least see if they, you know, look at their resume, there were people who were willing to do that in their community, and I think that'd be something I think we should also embrace in our city, because we do have, we just saw a few homeless people who are here who spoke from their heart, and just compassion goes a long way, and I think we have the capacity to do that here in our community, and that's something I'd really like to see happen in Federalway.
Great, thank you very much. Deputy Mayor Burbage?
Thank you. We have seen such strong evidence this evening of the wonderful efforts that go on in our community, from our scouts, from our scouts' leaders, from all the others working on the Camp Kilworth issue, on the Lake Gene issue, and then the others that were mentioned during citizen comment, but also the reports from the council, the very definite dedication shown by my colleagues on the council, and by our mayor, and our city staff, to work towards solutions that, to bring us to a better place. And I just want to express that appreciation. This morning, I attended a meeting of the South County Area Transportation Board, and we had some reports on upcoming funding, some of which we will be participating in as a city, our staff are working on making sure that our city is present in applying for any available funding, and following up on each of those applications. Then, last week, I was involved in the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee's monthly meeting, and also our annual retreat. We had some great presentations by some of our outstanding facilities in our city. One was from the Powell's Wood Garden, which is on Dash Point Road, just west of Pacific Highway South, several blocks, and Monte Powell, who developed that, along with his wife Diane, gave a presentation, "It is truly a beautiful garden, please visit it when you have a chance." Also, we had some updates from a couple of other programs in our city. One was Wild Waves, which is in the process of doing some rebranding and tweaking of their focus. They're actually planning on bringing back more of a focus on using the Enchanted Village that they had used historically as part of it, but we also had a presentation and an update on Pacific Bonsai Museum. And I think it would be helpful if we could perhaps, I would suggest that we periodically have presentations by each of these facilities and the others in our city, so that we can become more familiar with their programs and their changes, and also share them with the community on a greater basis. Looking forward to the retreat on Saturday, and the agenda will be available first to the council to review, and then publicly, ahead of time, so that you can have a chance to see what's being offered. There will be two chances at that retreat, which goes from 9:00 in the morning until 3:15 or 3:30 in the afternoon, there'll be two chances, one in the morning and one in the afternoon for citizen comment as well. So, and then on Sunday, the day after the retreat, our outstanding Jet Cities Chorus has their annual Sweetie Pie Social where they perform, and, and offer pies of all kinds for your enjoyment. That's my report this evening, thank you very much.
All right, thank you. All right, and with that, we are adjourned.